So a couple of work sessions for the Oregon City Commissioner order for Tuesday, April 7th, 2015. Call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner West? And...
Commissioner West has excused absences until the end of, until her resignation at this point.
Okay. And Mayor Holliday?
Here.
Next is future agenda items that are again, I don't think, David?
Yes?
Future agenda items?
We bring those to you in advance, but they're not here.
Okay. So discussion items, first one is 15-205 Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, Myers Road corridor plan presentation.
So David, if you want to step up? Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We appreciate the time tonight. We've got two topics to cover, and this is the first one. It's one that's familiar to some of you, but maybe not to all of you. So I asked David Brokaw, who's with Wallace Engineering, to come and pare down as much as we could and summarize the corridor plan, right? So we're trying to stay efficient for you. And focus most of our energy on intersection control analysis, which is really the work that we've been doing since November of 2014. In November 2014, if you remember, we brought this topic forward. We were working towards getting it adopted. And at that meeting, we heard a fair amount of feedback from property owners and interested stakeholders that were concerned about the amount of analysis that went into the roundabout. So this corridor plan is really about a 3,000-foot level review of a corridor and what we could do. And so typically, we wouldn't put that kind of energy into a intersection control analysis, but there was enough concern about it in that intersection, especially with city acquisition and property neighboring that. And hearing from those neighborhood concerns, we decided, hey, we could do this, and we can get it done in a reasonable amount of time for a reasonable amount of money. So we changed Wallace's scope, and they, along with DKS and Associates, who's our transportation engineer, looked at a lot of the background information related to that intersection specifically. So the idea would be that we would have work session tonight and bring that back to you. We've already been to the planning commission. The planning commission adopted the plan without the intersection control analysis. But the direction we got from the city commission at the time was, you know, let's go do some more. Would that be a good idea? So we've brought, done some more. We'd like to incorporate that back into the corridor plan and get it before you on next meeting as well. So assuming today you hear what you think is good information, we'll work on incorporation of that and bring it back and hopefully get that to you next week. We haven't talked really about whether or not we incorporate it all into the document so it could be adopted in that short amount of time. But so, that's the goal.
Just a quick question at the very beginning. What would it cost to build this in ballpark dollars?
Oh, right off the bat, it was over $3 million, I believe, is what we're...
The roundabout?
Yeah. The full five-leg roundabout?
Yeah.
It's over 3.4, something like that.
And how much of that money do we have?
Well, we've, depends. Depends on how you want to look at it.
Okay.
We've got a, we've got a beginning fund balance or SDC fund, but that's not all intended for this particular intersection.
Okay.
So I would say, this is one of those projects that's listed in the transportation system plan that we're supposed to be collecting funding for through SDCs. Not all of it's SDC-qualifiable, but about 500,000 of it's collected in SDCs. The balance of that is the question, really. We could allocate some pavement maintenance funding to it in the future if we plan and budget for that. We could budget some street funding to that if we plan and budget for that. We're not intending to do that today. And so, this is a long, this is a longer-range plan that we will have to pursue. This corridor plan, once adopted, the orig, I mean, there's lots of improvements in this corridor plan that we can't necessarily afford to do today. But it's, it's the first step, just like the Malala corridor plan, the Seventh Street corridor plan, Main Street, all those kind of projects. Having a plan in place so that we can implement in pieces is what we'd like to do. This intersection, you can't really do it in pieces. When we get ready to do that, we're going to probably pursue grants and hopefully have consensus with our city commission at the time that we move forward with that particular project.
Proceed.
Yeah, thanks, John. So as John said, we're going to try and buzz through the corridor plan and just kind of skip to the recommendations of the plan with very little background. So we broke the corridor plan. The study area was Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, and Myers Road. And we broke it up into several different segments, as shown in the picture in front of you. Segment one, Lynn Avenue from Fifth and Jackson to Park Drive, near Singer Creek Park, has improvements, including a shared use path, travel lanes, and a widened shoulder. And each one of these segments, you know, I'll just kind of skip through the improvements that we're suggesting, just to get us to, up to speed with these. Segment two was from Park Drive to the intersection of Warner, Milney, Warner, Parrott, included some sidewalk and some stormwater treatments and curb ramp improvement type, type work. Segment three, on the other side of the intersection on Leland Road, included bridging some sidewalk gaps and additional issues with stormwater and curb ramps. Segment four, Myers Road, again, same type of issues, adding sidewalks and bike lanes, kind of filling in some of the gaps in, in the system here. We also looked adjacent to Lynn Avenue around Singer Creek Park. We recommended a few improvements to add a parallel network for pedestrians and bikes. And then also looked at some gaps at Gardner Middle School, issues with fences and sidewalks and getting kids to and from the school. And then that brings us to the roundabout. After, we looked at a couple of different roundabouts with the corridor and made a recommendation for this five-leg design that you see in front of you. And as John said, during the public involvement process, some issues were raised, and the council decided to go back and look at this intersection in greater detail, and determined whether or not this was the appropriate treatment. And that was the intent of the intersection control analysis.
Let's go back to that slide real quick. So just so you know, this, this picture, just because it's green doesn't necessarily mean that those are all landscape areas. It helps depict kind of the skeleton of the roundabout, if you will. And, you know, we haven't put, and yet, even with this intersection analysis, we haven't put a lot of energy into making sure we've got exactly the right diameter, exactly the right lane alignments. But generally, this is where we're at. So just know that that green doesn't necessarily mean we're going to put a landscape median all the way down Warner-Milney Road, for instance.
Well, and just know that I won't be in support of anything that does anything more to the Savage property than has already been done.
We think we can work with the Savage property owners in a way that would not necessarily reduce parking. It may impact access, just because of the roundabout itself.
Well, Bill and Betty Savage have been citizens in Oregon City for, since way before any of us were here. And they gave quite a bit the last time, and I don't think she's willing to do anymore, and I'm going to support her on that. So what, what the rest of the commission does, I don't know. But, you know, if we can move it north and west, or whatever needs to be done, but that's where I'm at on that piece of property.
That's design elements that will come up as we move forward. Obviously, the more you move it, there's other places that get impacted as well. But we think we can work with Betty, and that, a lot of that will come out of the detailed design.
Okay. So moving on, we started an intersection control analysis. We looked at five different options for that particular intersection, including a no-bid, no-build analysis. So we looked at two different signalized options. One where we made modifications to, to the signal, allowing U-turns that was there existing, which included some closures to, to an median on, for movements onto Central Point. Another option, which expanded the signal to include the Central Point intersection with the existing intersection. We did another option, which made no signal modifications, but closed some of the movements off of Central Point, left turn onto Warner-Parrott. And then we looked at the two roundabout options, a four-leg and a five-leg roundabout. Each one of those options, we evaluated for traffic operations, how well it performed for capacity, based on projected levels of traffic out to 30 years. We looked at construction costs. We did details and estimates, as detailed as you can get with a planning level. We looked at maintenance costs, based on existing maintenance numbers from some of your current roundabouts and signal operations. We tried to look at safety impacts for each of the various options, based on crash data that we had from the sites. System context is, in essence, just how well people understand the improvements that are going to be put in that location. We looked at right-of-way impacts and access impacts to the various properties adjacent to the, to the intersection.
Got a question here, Mayor. So at, at what point in time do we look at the, a roundabout compared to the existing intersection and say, maybe we stick with the existing, because this is getting way too complicated?
In essence, is what we did.
Yeah.
So the no-build is, is leaving it as is.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's part of this analysis. We said that we're going to compare, you know, the proposed improvements to what's existing, to what other options we could conceive of.
Yeah, okay.
So the, the first signalized option, just to kind of rehash, was closing the left turn movement off of Central Point, installing a median to kind of prevent vehicles from shortcutting across Warner-Parrott there, and allowing U-turns for vehicles coming off of Central Point to turn left and U-turn around onto Warner-Parrott, sorry, right onto Warner-Parrott, and then U-turn back the other way.
I guess the main, the, one of the biggest problems with this intersection is that left turn out of Central Point Road onto Warner-Parrott. That, that is the most problematic move. So if you're, if you're looking at this Central Point Road, as you come up to Warner-Parrott, you want to make that left turn.
Making this left turn here.
So most of these prohibit that, that movement from happening.
Okay.
Because of the safety concerns.
There's both safety and capacity concerns for Central Point Road. That was part of the other reasons for this. The second signalized option makes Central Point part of a new signalized option. Just to cut to the chase, this one did not fare well on, on the operational perspective. It didn't meet the capacity needs of, of the projections. So we kind of threw that one out. Here's the closure of Central Point with no changes to the existing intersection, which in essence is not allowing U-turns off of Central Point. So vehicles who came down Central Point and wanted to turn left onto Warner-Parrott would either take another route through the neighborhoods, or go down Lynn and take a, a left further down the corridor. And then we come to our roundabouts. We looked at a four-leg roundabout, tying in Central Point just to the west of the, of the roundabout. That had some issues, especially the access onto Central Point off of the roundabout. And then a five-leg roundabout, which is what was recommended in the, in the corridor report. So from the analysis that we did, we looked at all the, the parts that, all the aspects of these things, and we tried to quantify each individual improvement and see if we could do an apples-to-apples comparison. So we did a present worth analysis of, of the various options, looking at delay costs, construction costs, crash saving, anticipation, the maintenance costs, and then did a present worth analysis, assuming, you know, a 20-year design horizon and, and a 4% interest rate, which may or may not be applicable. You know, we're going to be hopefully building this for much longer than 20 years. So from that, the, the recommendation was that the five-leg roundabout provided the best value of the improvements. And that was the, the result of our intersection control analysis.
I think the, the key here was, the, the other one was the weekday PM peak hour delay cost, which is the second column there. And the fact that that figure was based on a, a small range of the intersection, not the full day delay, not the full amount of delay that would happen during the day. We looked at a peak hour and came up with that number just on the peak hour. So if you looked at the whole day, it'd be a much bigger number with regard to, the, the no-build option would be much higher than, than it is today. So, or than, than, than was shown here. So I think that was, for me, that was kind of critical into, to making sure you understood that this PM peak hour delay cost is very conservative.
I want to point out, I think I made a small mistake in, in typing this up. The signalized option two and the closure of Central Point left turn are flipped in this.
I was going to say, that seemed...
Yeah, the construction cost for that closure is, yeah, 45,000, and the signalized option was 700.
So being an electrician, not a mathematician, what does this present worth column mean? Because...
So in essence, what, what you do for this is, we calculate an annual cost for delays. And this, as John said, is, is a conservative analysis, since based on, we worked with DKS to kind of find out what were industry practices for delay costs. And we took those numbers and applied that to the delay that's anticipated for vehicles in that one hour of PM peak. And that provides a cost. And then the construction cost is an upfront cost, so that's a year-one cost. The delay cost is, is an annualized cost, so that comes every year. The crash savings, again, is an annualized cost, as, as is the maintenance cost. And you, in essence, Excel, you plug it in, and, and it spits out a number for you. So...
I think, you know, usually you see them based on construction cost. If we build it today versus waiting 10 years and then build it in 10 years, that's usually where you see that present worth analysis. We've just added other factors into that and tried to amortize, ties that over 20-year period. So that's where, you know, the, the payoff, obviously, to me, when I look at this, I go, well, jeez, the construction cost is 3.3, you know, 3, $3,350,000 for a roundabout. You compare that to the others, and, you know, well, jeez, that, that, let's just stick with the no-build option. It's zero, right? But there are other costs associated with that. And for the most part, it's delay costs. So if you, if you value your travel times, then that delay cost is real. If you don't value that, if you think sitting in a car is okay, and those delays, whether they be fuel efficiency costs or pollution costs, then, you know, you wouldn't put much value on that. But these, these values that they use for those delay costs are, are an industry standard number that, that you would typically apply in this kind of an analysis. So that's where the big makeup is, is really, between the no-build and the five-leg roundabout, you see that difference.
The, this crash saving is also significant, and that's also based on industry standard. FHWA provides guidance on crash severity and cost of those severities. And you can estimate, based on the type of improvements that you're, you're putting out there, what the severity of crashes are. Roundabouts have been found to, to have much less severe crashes. And so you end up getting a crash savings from those.
I have a question on another column. The option, is the option viable from operations perspective? It says no on the closure of Central Point.
Yeah, that was the one that got switched. That's the second signalized option. That one was not viable from an operation perspective.
Oh, okay.
My apologies for that.
Anybody else?
What was the, how many cars make that left turn off of Central Point Road?
That's something I'll have to look up for you. That's, DKS did the traffic study. The left turn, so I have predicted 2035 volumes. The left turn off of Central Point, they had, for the PM peak, I believe, 55 vehicles.
Compared to the right turn, which is...
Compared to the right turn, which was 350, off of Central Point.
Okay.
So, and in the, the intersection control analysis, they did predictions of where vehicles would go in the various scenarios.
So if we just said no left turn, they would have to go some, make a right turn?
Most people are making a right turn.
Yeah.
Most people are making a right turn.
Okay.
So...
Was that the last slide?
I believe that is the last slide. Yep.
So we're asking for, you know, a recommendation. We think that, based on the analysis, based on what's been discussed, I mean, we've heard a lot of positive information, feedback with regard to the five-lane roundabout, as well as the, some of the people that have concerns about it. We've, you know, we think from a community perspective, this is the right long-term solution. We've done a 20-year analysis. We know that that intersection, once redone, is going to last much longer than 20 years. And so, these numbers, again, fall conservative on that factor, if you're thinking, again, about delay costs or accident costs. We're going to, you know, if we leave the no-build, or if we do the no-build. To me, the other options just don't work very well. Doing a U-turn in, in a signalized intersection is not going to be a good move, good solution for us. Obviously, the two-signal oper, option doesn't work very well, or at all. The other, the closest would be the, the four-leg roundabout. It does provide less impacts, but it's still not, it's still a solution that's got some safety concerns associated with it, that we'd, you know, rather not have to manage, once we build a brand-new facility like that. It's kind of like building a facility and then, you know, building a facility that you're not that...
Commissioner Polly?
Impressed with, so...
Yeah, I, you know, I'm always looking for the long-term solution, but I share concerns that Mayor Holliday has too, which is the property acquisition and how large this thing is. And there's no way to pare it down or mitigate the, the impacts on the properties? Not really, huh?
Well, I think, again, we may find radius changes that'll be different, but, you know, something smaller. But DKS, who's the traffic engineer, has not jumped on board with that just yet, right? They're still wanting to, you know, see more design drawings, look at grades, those kind of things, before they make that decision. But the bottom line is, what we heard from the public is, if you're going to build a roundabout, build it right. We've got to move large trucks through that area, and we've got to move a fair amount of traffic. So on some of those segments of that roundabout, we need more than one lane. We know that. So, and part of that roundabout is a two-lane roundabout. So, you know, we could go with narrower lanes. We could, you know, could go with a smaller, you know, internal diameter. And, and that may play out. I just think that it's too early for us to make that determination now. We will value-engineer that when the time comes.
So the, the whole corridor plan is in phases. Could this be in a phase two, where we did one phase, maybe that was like closure of the left turn, and then at another time do a phase of the roundabout when it's more warranted? I mean, is that possible to have a phased-in approach?
Ooh. You mean the closure of the left turn lane on Central Point Road?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That, that actually can happen. We know, just from this analysis, that we have that option as, as, you know, one of the options, is to close that, that left turn. So that, that piece is. Trying to build the roundabout in, in phases is a little more difficult.
No, no, not that, not that. But to have, maybe to have one first, like the closure of the, a Central Point left turn, and then at a later time, do the roundabout. I mean, I know this is all going to take time anyway, because it's going to take a lot of time for funding, but...
We have the other concern. I mean, we can place a median in that left turn lane that would prevent vehicles from getting in that lane and making that turn. But because of the configuration of that intersection, those cars that typically would take the right turn in that, they'll climb, I mean, that would typically take the left turn, they'll want to get in that travel lane, that, that right turn travel lane, and they're going to want to still make the movement that they always have in. So they'll essentially be making an illegal left turn there. And I'm not sure how we prevent that. I don't know that we have a solution for that.
With a black-and-white car.
Yeah.
But not a small one.
Yeah, that, you're right. That's, that's possible solution as well.
One thing, one thing I want to say is, and John has been talking a little bit about the delay factor. And I think most of us, when we think about delay, we think of delay in terms of our own experience as a motorist or a passenger. But a lot of the anxiety that I hear right now, and that you hear from constituents, a lot of that can be addressed in the design phase by pressing our engineers to come up with creative solutions to some of these design challenges. The bigger concern I have is not doing it, and the effect that, that, that wait and the delay times have on freight, movement of goods and services throughout the community. And just thinking about trying to have a strong, healthy economy and be in a attractive place to create jobs and maintain them, I think it's important that our transportation system work well. And this is one of those, it's kind of a long-term planning commitment, knowing that there's design challenges out there. And committing to long-term planning while at the same time knowing that some of those design challenges are going to address a lot of these things, some of them might not. And so it's, there's somewhat of a risk in, in moving forward with a plan, but there's a much greater risk that we have identified by not having it. And I think that's the, that's the point that I think is the takeaway from this work session, is what's the cost of not having, having a corridor plan? And I think it's pretty high, probably.
Commissioner Shaw?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I'm a, I'm a fan of roundabouts. And this one here, I haven't been able to be involved with it as much as some other folks have been up here and out here. So I'm still kind of on the edge here a little bit. I would say, continue with the process, I guess. Is that what we're looking for tonight, John? Or what, what are you looking for tonight on this?
Well, we are, but...
Consensus.
We're, we're trying to build some consensus, because we've kind of thrown as much energy at this concept plan as we're, you know, we really can. We spent more than we budgeted to do this. And we would like to get it adopted, so that, again, we've got that and available for use for implementation. And then, so we're looking for some consensus on this, around this particular intersection. I don't think there's anything else in the concept plan that has been, you know, has been concerning, or, or very concerning. So, and the other thing I want to mention, to follow up with David, is just about any of the major intersection, I think of the Jug Handle project and how, you know, controversial that must have been. I don't remember a lot of that. But Nancy was driving a lot of that. Alice was driving a lot of that project. And the community rallied around that particular project. But there were those people who said, why not just improve the intersection of Washington and 213, and somehow make that safer? Well, there, there really wasn't a good way of doing that. And so we built what was right there, right? We built a good, the comparative I would have is what we've got at Beaver Creek and 213, where, again, it was a much bigger project that needed to be built at that particular intersection, and we elected to build something less. And we are going to regret that for a very, very long time. And this is another key intersection in Oregon City, where if, you know, I feel if we don't build the right solution there, we're, we've got a lot of growth out in those areas. We're going to, we're going to regret that decision later. And that's, and, and I think our evaluation of these intersections was done, we tried very, to stay, well, we tried to bring in factors that don't typically come into just a typical intersection analysis. So, so tried to put value to those. And so that's where I'm at. I feel like, especially, I plan to use that intersection for a very long time myself, whether I'm here working for the city, or retired, or something else, you know? And I just know that that intersection needs some enhancements. And out of all the locations in, in town, where we have a roundabout called for, and we've got a lot of roundabouts called for in our transportation system plan. And this is one where it, to me, it makes a lot of sense.
Because it's a very complicated intersection anyway.
It is.
Commissioner Smith?
I have, I have the same concerns in terms of the property. But I think, you know, some of that probably can be addressed with the design. I think the Mount Pleasant property plays a big role in that. And I, I don't know how far we can move or push into, I mean, I'd much rather see us cut into that corner there where the, the IMC building is, or, or the, the new building, or that new section of Mount Pleasant. But the other question, I guess, I think I may ask this before, was...
Chief Panis giving you dirty little...
He probably is. He probably is. Oh, yeah, we're just gonna, yeah, sorry about that.
You're still sensitive, man.
I think, I think it was asked before, but in terms of the scenarios where Warner, Milney, I guess, went through originally, I mean, we've, that whole intersection's changed around, but that doesn't help. There's no scenario where we would ever consider that because of stacking and all that kind of thing, stuff, right? I mean, that right-of-way that used to go right through there.
Yeah, right through the old, that's now the school property.
Right.
Right, yeah. Well, that, that was broken then.
Right.
And really, it's about, this isn't, we've, we've got a fair amount of traffic to move out there. And that kind of change would, would take your efficiency...
It's two.
Yeah, they would be, they're so close together, the two intersections. So we didn't analyze that, because we know the efficiency loss is associated with the change.
Right, okay.
Okay. So here's where I'm at. As much as I dislike the five-legged traffic circle, it seems to me that's the only reasonable...
Long-term.
Long-term way to go.
Yeah.
So as we move forward, I think that should be our consensus, is that we move forward with that. And then if we get to the point where it looks like we're going to be able to build it, then we can beat up John and the, the consultants and whoever it is to figure out a way to make it be the least impactful on, especially the church and the painter's property and the Savage property. I think if we're going to have to absorb impacts, it should be on the city's... I think if we're gonna have to absorb impact, it should be on the city's property.
Yeah, I know we have the flexibility to do that with the city property where we did it before, so.
And, you know, Jim's not gonna use that building forever anyway, so.
He's got his hand on the injection button.
So I think you have, I think you have a consensus.
Okay, thank you.
Someone will bring it back for approval in a future meeting.
Yes. So moving on, adoption of the new stormwater and grading design standards, another scintillating topic from Mr. John Lewis.
Yeah, you guys get all the fun topics tonight. I don't know where all my cohorts are, they should be, you know, very interested in these topics.
Really?
I think the attendance this evening should give you an indication.
Riveting our conversations are.
Thank God, but thank God there was dinner.
That took a half an hour, which was, which was good.
Welcome, Mr. Montalvo.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna turn this over quickly to Martin, because he's led the lion's share of the effort on this. And so, Martin, if you could take that, take over and introduce Brown and Caldwell.
Sure, so Martin Montalvo, Operations Manager, Public Works Department. And with me this evening is Mrs. Alyssa Maxwell. She is representing one of our primary consultant on this project, which is Brown and Caldwell. This is a project that we've been working on now for a little over a year, and give you a little bit of background on it, because I'm sure everybody here is, you know, enamored with stormwater regulations and grading regulations. So this is a topic that we brought to you as a result of our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, so our NPDS permit and our MS4 permit, which are administered by the State Department of Environmental Quality, but really as a mandate from EPA saying you shall do these things to protect your stormwater system. So it affects our natural systems, which we've got listed for you here, all of the natural systems that we're primarily concerned about with this. It has impacts to both our private and public infrastructure. As I mentioned earlier, our primary concern is impacts to water quality, but the previous iterations of these manuals didn't take into consideration so much both the water quality and flow control. So this new iteration, we'll take a look at both of those. We also took a look at our older drainage master plan, and we said, where are there deficiencies that we need to update so that we can address them within our new stormwater grading manual? So with that, Melissa's gonna give you a little background on our existing manual and how we move forward from there.
Great, so as Martin said, we've been working on this project with staff for over a year, and where you guys stand right now, where the city stands on stormwater management, is there's an existing stormwater and grading design manual that was adopted in 99. As I look at that, I actually look at that as being quite progressive. At that time, there were not a lot of cities the size of Oregon City that were adopting comprehensive drainage manuals. You saw it in Portland, you saw it in Seattle, but for Oregon City to have been thinking about stormwater at that point was really sticking with kind of the forefront of what engineering standards were. Now we're a few years later. Stormwater standards are also in the Public Works Standards in the municipal code in chapter 13 and title 17. So these updates today are kind of, or these updates that we're looking at are touching on kind of all aspects of this. The current standards that you guys have have been working quite well from a flood control standpoint. It doesn't sound like you get a lot of complaints about neighborhood flooding, which tells us that the standards have been doing what they've, what they're, what they were established to do. However, we're looking at new standards. And so the question is, if things are working, you know, why would we make a change? Yep, so, are you gonna click it? You're gonna click it.
That's why I pay you.
Yeah, excellent. So why we're making a change is really, as Martin mentioned, water quality. So the NPDS permit that you guys have, as well as TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Load Regulations from the state, look at water quality, and in particular, exceedances that have happened in the Willamette River for bacteria, mercury, temperature. So you guys have specific standards that have to be met, and those are implemented through your NPDS permit.
Where are those, where are those exceedings measured at?
So statewide data, and I don't know off the top of my head where...
Yeah, we have numerous sampling locations within Oregon City. Some of them are within our known stormwater outfalls, some of our major outfalls, some of them are just in situ within some of the stream and creek systems within the city. We can give you detailed information on those, but I don't have...
No, I'm just curious, where do you think the mercury is coming from?
Most of the mercury is actually atmospheric deposition. It's coming from China, unfortunately, and that's the general consensus with, within the region and the state, and...
Okay, all right, thanks.
So Oregon City's NPDS permit, you're part of a larger Clackamas County permit, and so all the municipal agencies within Clackamas County are under the same permit. Everybody is, has the same requirements to implement the same standards to address water quality. And so specifically, here's what the new standards in the permit say. They're requiring you to adopt standards, this is the key up here, you've been looking at flood control, your standards have controlled flooding, but now we wanna look at stream function on a more focused scale, and think about how our development and our stormwater facilities can really mimic natural conditions. So we're looking at not just how much water, but how often the water flows, and how long those storms are entering the system. The new, the permit that you're under right now also requires the city to prioritize low-impact development, and you see examples of that kind of all over the region, and that's looking at things like, you've heard about rain gardens, stormwater planters, kind of surface features that, again, mimic how runoff happens naturally. We did wanna identify for you that the permit requirement to adopt these new standards was November 1st, 2014. As we said, we've been working on this project for quite a long time. City has been in correspondence with DEQ, and the regulators there, they're aware that you are making progress toward these adoptions, so we don't anticipate any problems from them. They've given full report to, full report to the state, so, but we are a bit behind as far as the regulation deadline.
How are we compared to the other jurisdictions under the same permit?
Ahead and behind.
It's a mixed match.
Right there in the middle, I like that.
Yeah. We're all functioning under a communal permit. We're all functioning under the same essentially permit requirements with this communal permit that we all work on. There's a few communities that are ahead of us, a few communities that are behind, there are a few communities that have their head in the sand. We're trying to deal with this progressively. We started on this over a year ago. The complexity of the issue and everything that we've tried to address with it, it's taken us beyond our program schedule. So we've touched base with DEQ, they know, we've been full, fully honest with them and forthcoming, and we don't anticipate any issues with our permit.
Martin, didn't they, didn't DEQ come to one of our, didn't they come to the workshop?
I don't believe we had a DEQ representative at the workshop. We've been to a couple of...
They were invited, they were invited.
They were also been, the regulator, they were in-between staff members, so DEQ didn't have a regulator on staff for about a year. They were not around for that time.
But we have gone to, there's a monthly aqua meeting that we go to, and we keep them abreast of what's going on with this project.
So just to touch briefly on how we got to where we are with the manual today, did you wanna cover the timeline?
Yeah, so just to give you a little background, we started over a year ago. We, first thing we did is we said, well, what are our existing standards? And we did a brief gap analysis, so where are we, where do we have holes? So from there, we took a look at all of our documents, all our resources, we brought Brown and Caldwell on, they helped us with our just regular management or NPDS permit, and we said, we wanna update our standards. So then we developed a project plan. We conducted monthly project meetings internally with public works staff, planning staff, any of the key stakeholders in the region that we wanted to talk with. We had a workshop with City of Wilsonville, we touched with, touched base with some of our regulatory partners. Then we worked with Alyssa and Krista at Brown and Caldwell, and we worked through a series of three workshops where we brought everybody to the table, and we said, we're gonna cover big chunks of this manual during these four-hour work sessions, with the little monthly work sessions building into each of those. From there, we finished the manual about five months ago, four months ago was, I think four months ago was final. And then from there, we've just been working on public outreach. So on February 19th, we had a two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour engineering workshop, where we invited anyone who's submitted an engineering or land use development application to our planning department in the last few years, was invited. Got an invitation from John Lewis saying, please come, and give them an opportunity to roll out the standards and give them some Q and A time with us. And that was actually very well received, and we had some good comments that came from that and some enlightening discussion. The last phase of this is bringing it to you guys and several other city commissions to, or city committees to get your buy-in on this. So first session is with you guys as a workshop, give you a chance to Q and A us. Then we're gonna be going to NRC tomorrow evening, Planning Commission, and a few other workshops.
So just a first question, so after your workshops, did you make any changes to the manual?
We made some revisions to the manual, based on some of the input that we received. We've got a webpage that we rolled out the day of the workshop, and we are soliciting comments through that. To date, we've gotten four questions, three of which we were able to say, oh, well, I can see, you know, I see how you're getting there, but let's explain this to you. And I believe only one of them has required any sort of revision to the actual manual.
Okay.
So just to touch on, I guess the point here is to say, this stormwater manual is comprehensive, and so this is a summary of the various topics that we discussed during those policy workshops that Martin was explaining. And in each of these cases, our method was to analyze and provide information on what the city's current standard says, what's going on regionally for these different areas, what the options are, and then make some decisions moving forward. So as you can see, the manual covers not just what the facility should look like, but we talk about maintenance and how this, how facilities are gonna be maintained for the long term, whether it's gonna be city or private developer that's gonna maintain that. We talk about, you know, site planning principles, not just thinking ahead of time as to how you're going to get these facilities in place long before you actually start submitting your applications. So the result is, there's, the resulting manual has nine chapters. Some of them are very similar to what the current standards are, things like grading standards and excavation standards, the conveyance system design, how big pipes, what types of materials, all those are pretty much the same as what's in the current manual. The manual also has a series of appendices that are really aimed at helping the development community implement the standards.
And the one thing that I wanna point out here that we really were progressive on is looking at the long-term aspects of these stormwater facilities. And we actually developed standards and boilerplates so that if a developer comes in and I'm gonna, I'm gonna build this community, and we're gonna have all these homes in here, and eventually, all of these assets in here are gonna be handed over to the city or to the homeowner association for maintenance. Typically, there's not a lot of guidance that's provided for those homeowner associations that, oh, now I have to maintain this, well, what am I supposed to do? And how frequently do I have to do this, and what's this gonna cost? And we've made it a requirement that the developer's supposed to complete this relatively simple form that outlines everything that needs to happen with all of these assets for everyone in the community. So if you have a small rain garden in front of your house, this is how you maintain it. If you have a regional pond for the entire development, this is how you have to maintain it. So we're trying to be a little bit more progressive with that approach. Sorry.
That's fine. So this is a short summary of kind of the key aspects of the manual. I believe you were also given a handout that has sort of a, I don't, has a bullet list of the changes, as well as a table that compares the current standards to what's in the new standards. So kind of the highlights of this manual are that, first of all, it meets your regulatory requirements, it's a key, important part. We've also gone to a single set, it says a single set of thresholds for water quality and flow control. And your current standards right now thresholds are what size of a project has to implement stormwater facilities. And right now, you have two different thresholds for what, what requires water quality treatment, what requires flow control. We've gone to a single standard so that developers know if they exceed 5,000 square feet, then of impervious surface, then they will have to implement the requirements in the manual.
We're trying to get away from the if this, then that, then if this, then that, then if this, now it's just one if this, then that.
We talked about, this manual prioritizes low-impact development, the use of above-ground and surface vegetated facilities as opposed to underground tanks. The manual has, is looking at stream function, and so the way those facilities are sized is slightly different from the old standards, so that the new sizing mimics natural conditions. We have planting guidance, so developers coming in have some really nice, actually sample layouts of how the plants should be put into the facility, as well as what types of plants, depending on the type of facility. Martin mentioned the maintenance requirements. And what we're seeing with the changes in this manual, we based the work on a manual that Wes, Clackamas County, developed. City of Wilsonville has recently adopted similar standards. With you guys, at the developer workshop, we're hearing, you know, we had folks from a couple other agencies, Clean Water Services was out at our workshop to hear what was going on. So I think, you know, in our opinion, there's gonna be some really good regional consistency with the type of changes that we're making here. And then the last bit of this manual is that to accompany the manual, there's what we call a BMP sizing tool. BMP is Best Management Practice, so a best-in-science stormwater facility design. And the sizing tool is a software program that has been developed to help developers quickly size a facility to meet, to mimic those stream function conditions, and it gives the same answer and the same size for every development, if, you know, if you have the same, so everybody's getting the same answer. And there's two advantages to that. One is it's simplified for developers to use. If they choose to use it, they can still use their own calculations, but this is a simplified method. And then it's also giving great consistency for the way that the information is coming to city staff that have to review these submittals. So they're able to have a more straightforward approach to identify whether people are meeting the standard or not. So that's the sizing tool. It'll be available, anybody will be able to access it from the city's website. And we thought you would be most interested today is to see a quick case study of how the changes in this manual might look on a particular project. So we've taken a quick look at, this is a recently built project out of Malala, Highway 213.
This is the Cooperstown Shopping Center.
So this project was built under the existing standards and, you know, designed to meet them and everything. It's about a two-and-a-half acre site, largely converted from an open space area to impervious surface. The site, as I understand, was designed, it meets your landscaping standards, but if you look at the picture, aerial photo, can, can they see when we?
No, they can't see the laser.
But if you look, what is that, to the right, I believe the majority of the landscaping on the site is located behind the building, which meets the standard, but might not be where we were intending for it to be. So...
It's basically a lot of asphalt.
It's a lot of asphalt, which is, again, meets the standard. And so the way that stormwater management is happening on the site today, if you look at this, there is underneath the parking lot, the larger square there is a series of underground pipes, tanks, that hold the stormwater. So that's the flow control. And then there's a smaller vault adjacent to it that's filled with filter media cartridges to provide water quality treatment. So it's there, I'm sure that they're functioning the way they're supposed to. It's challenging for maintenance, and it's hard for the city to know if maintenance is happening, right? No one can see what's going on there. But I think it's, you know, it's designed perfectly well. So we looked at that, what would that mean if we were to use? The sort of the preferred method coming from the new manual would be this use of stormwater planters, and you're probably familiar with these, I know there's a whole series of them out of Beaver Creek. So these are using basically your planter strip with a amended soil media and a drain rock layer that is gonna hold the water, you've got plants and soil to treat the water, and then those facilities can discharge right into your regular conveyance line system downstream, just like they do today. So we did, using that BMP sizing tool, we figured out how large the facilities would need to be for that site, and did a quick layout of where you might locate them. So, go ahead.
Oh, I have a quick question. So the new way of doing that with the planter beds, is that actually less expensive than the underground tanks?
We're getting there.
We have a cost comparison, yeah. So, and the answer to that, of course, is it depends, but site by site. Certainly prettier. You know, we didn't redesign the site plan for this site, we were just looking at as first pass, where might you put them, how much space might it take up? If you were to... If you were to design this site, starting from scratch under the new standard, I think that you would see some adjustments to where the buildings were located in order to get these landscaped areas at the downhill portion of the site, which would be along Malala. But it gives you a sense of how big these are and where, how you might incorporate them into landscaping features. And so on this particular site, the cost comparison came out nearly the same from a construction standpoint. So we're just looking at the cost to install the tank and vault versus those planters. Now, those areas of the site right now where the planters are going, currently, they were installed with landscaping too. So you're only doing that once, there's some savings there, we didn't incorporate that.
You lost a chunk of building there too, didn't you?
No, you lost about 10 parking spots from our calculation.
This 50 by 30 thing isn't covering a piece of the building?
Nope.
It's concrete.
All right.
Well, and there's a landscaping strip there today, I believe.
Yeah, so that block that you see in the top going vertically, that is covering over about 10 existing parking spaces.
And again, you may recuperate that by shifting buildings, you might be able to get the parking back in there, but we didn't go back and do a full redesign of the site.
But then again, there's no ongoing maintenance of these facilities beyond some basic stuff.
Exactly. Would you be investing in landscape maintenance?
You're not, yes.
And would you be investing in landscape maintenance, would be taking care of your stormwater requirements as well? And you wouldn't be investing in these labor-intensive filter media and then you've got an underground vault that you don't know what's going on in there?
Well, and confined space entry to access it. The nice thing, you know, as we think about, for a commercial facility, a commercial site, commercial property owners are typically paying a landscape contract anyway. And so it's the same contract that they would be paying to have that, but that company's going to come out and now do maintenance of planters, so slightly different plants that they need to maintain. Less mowing, it wouldn't be more, these are going to be plants, not grass, plants and shrubs. So, but it also gives the city, from a overall maintenance perspective, an ability to see if these things are functioning or not, an ability to do drive-by inspection, and usually an ability to see if something's going wrong, it's a lot easier to find out what it is. Usually, you can find out which facility was clogged.
And then the other improvement, which I always like to tout, is the quality-of-life aesthetics issues. So you've got stormwater facilities that become an asset to the facility and not something that you're laying parking over. So you'll start seeing those improvements throughout the entire region because everyone's moving in that same direction.
So I think where we're at there.
So timeline, so like I said, we've been working on this for quite a while and we're coming to the culmination of the project. So we had a developers workshop on February 19th and we fielded questions there. We've got a webpage up for comments and questions. John presented to Citizen Involvement Committee last night. We're here with you guys this evening to give you a brief overview and try and get some consensus on where we're going with this. We are also going to NRC tomorrow, we were able to get onto their agenda tomorrow rather than May 13th. We have City Commission, or Planning Commission on April 13th, so that'll be next week. And then we'll be coming back to you guys for an actual first hearing, May 6th and May 20th. So there are multiple items that we'll be bringing to you. One of them is a code change to Title 13, which will be through an ordinance. And then to adopt the stormwater and grading manual as well as the update to the erosion control manual, those will be two resolutions, or one resolution that comes in conjunction with that ordinance. So the first hearings for all of those will be May 6th and then May 20th. So then that brings us to, our question for you is, we have a recommended adoption period, so after the May 20th hearing, we have some latitude in terms of when we want to formalize anything in after such and such date, you have to adopt the new standards.
So what's the effective date?
Yeah, the effective date. So what we're looking at is 90 days after final adoption. So we're coming to you May 20th, so 90 days after that. Anything that's currently in the land use process right now would essentially be grandfathered in. But if you are, if you've only had a pre-application meeting, but you haven't submitted a formal land use application, you would have until the end of that 90-day period to get your land use application in, or you would have to comply with the new standards.
Seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, is that enough time for education? You figure the 90 days to switch gears and let people know?
That's one of the things that we'll be doing during that period. I actually have a small working session with a group of developers that Planning has asked us to come to in about two weeks and we're going to be talking to them. We've got the manuals, everything's available online and we'll have hard copies available at city facilities if somebody wants to take a look at. And then myself and other members of staff are available to answer questions anytime during that.
And essentially, from what I'm seeing, doesn't look like there are any gigantic increase in costs.
From our calculations and from case studies throughout the region, we actually have another case study that we brought with us in case you had more questions. We're not, we're not anticipating huge cost shifts. It's not going to be that this is two times, three times what it currently costs for us to develop. It's just a change of mindset. It's a new process. And to kind of compensate for that, we've taken actions that kind of help make the development process more streamlined. So you can get your application in a little bit faster, it makes it easier for us to review and hopefully gets us all on the same page. So there's little cost savings in there as well.
Of course, do you want to see that? So we did put in here, just as extras, there's, these are some case studies. So Water Environment Services at Clackamas County adopted, as far as the technical requirements of the facilities, they're the same as what is in the manual that you guys are looking at. They developed those standards several years ago and they've been doing a lot of study and work on evaluating what the impacts of the manual might be. So another, they hired another consultant to actually do some independent evaluation and this is, they, so we could share this information with the community. In this example, they were looking at Happy Valley Town Center, which is a much larger commercial site than our example. And they, they were doing a full site plan evaluation. They did the re-layout of the site, looked at everything. And they, their conclusions were that they would not have to lose any retail area or parking in order to design the facility with LID stormwater facilities. It would cost about $40,000 more for the construction, oh, let's see, over actual cost.
Construction.
Or construction. They also looked at what it would take to put in an underground system and came up with that it would be significantly less than a new underground system. I'm not quite sure of that, again, not on our slides, so I'm trying to interpret the information. But fairly minimal change in cost for a facility to design that big.
Thanks. So I have one question, and that relates to a specific project. The Rossman 2 site, which eventually is going to develop one way or the other, you know the site I'm talking about, Home Depot and the, okay? So that specifically is a site where we're really not looking to infiltrate water through that. Is there, is there?
There's a clause that we've written into almost every chapter of the manual that states that you must, you know, try and meet these standards or prove to the satisfaction of the public works director or city engineer as to why you can't meet this and propose alternative standards.
So there isn't way for us to deal with stormwater flow and filtration on that site without filtering it through 50 years of garbage on its way to the groundwater?
Correct. And that would be, there's, yeah, this manual has specific, actually, it says, here's the types of conditions where you shouldn't use an infiltration facility and underground contamination being top one.
If I can interject, it's already under a DEQ permit there anyway.
Yeah.
So they have.
I just like to ask the question.
Yeah.
All right, so what else do you need from us?
Consensus.
Yeah, consensus, and then if you feel the 90-day burn-in period is appropriate period is what we were looking for.
Comments, Mr. Smith?
No, that's good.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I like the 90 days and I also like the idea that we're visually going to be seeing something that we can monitor and stuff, so.
Mr. Pauli?
I think it makes a lot of sense.
And we're good.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Fraser?
Thank you, Your Honor. So tis the season for the city manager's office to do coffee and questions, which is the, something I started a few years ago where I go to each of the departments or divisions within departments and try to at least have, usually typically, it's an hour-long session with each employee of the city. And as our employee numbers have grown a little bit over the years, that process, you know, we still, we're continuing to do that because when I first got to Oregon City, we had quite a few labor disputes and things that just seemed like there wasn't enough communication. So we started doing that and our labor disputes have kind of almost gone away at this point. So we think it's, we think it's good. There's also, I think it's also a really nice thing because it helps our rank-and-file staff have an opportunity to converse with me about things that they see that are working well or not working well. It happens right as we're doing the budget, so if there's some anomaly that gets missed, you know, and somehow in our preparation, I get to hear about that. It also comes, we designed it to happen after you adopt your formal goals, so then I can talk to them about the mission of the commission because they're actually the ones that help us get there. And it's usually a really good dialogue. You mentioned Rossman, that used to be one of the most lively topics that I would get asked about my first, my first two years here especially, that was a, our employees were passionately interested in that project. And I used to hear lots of questions and every once in a while, some candid comments about that, so how the city was responding to it. So that's something we're going to continue doing and so I'll be doing, starting that tomorrow morning. The next, I wanted to, I know all of you probably get the League of Oregon City Magazine, but there's a section inside, it's a comprehensive section on right-of-way management. A lot of my fellow city manager colleagues around the state want to do just some of the things Oregon City has done. We're one of the leaders, especially in our population segment in the state, in right-of-way management. And the League has been a big help to us because they, you know, they created a model ordinance. It's not a coincidence that our right-of-way and our franchise attorney is Nancy Warner, who wrote one of these articles and also was the original author, her firm was, of the, they were commissioned by the League to develop the ordinance. So I know that some of my colleagues want to do some of these things and in some places there simply isn't, there aren't the resources to, it's such a big thing to manage. If you don't have a triggering event like BTOP like we had a few years ago, sometimes it's hard to get people to recognize that this is a giant asset. But we have some of our closest neighbors here that virtually make no use of that asset. And I think that's a shame. So I'm hoping that the League's publication of that information will inspire others to use best practices and it might even inspire other government entities not to sue each other when they do use best practices because that's another thing that isn't helpful. Everybody has an opinion and the Supreme Court is going to help us, you know, sort that out. But I think over time, these are good things for cities to be doing and we're certainly proud of being at the forefront of that. Also, the sea lion resolution that the county passed recently, the same.
Well, it informed me.
Yes, the same groups, yeah. So there's a gentleman that calls me about every six months and talks to me about sea lion, sea lion predation primarily of salmon. And I mean, these things can, these animals can get pretty aggressive when they take a fish away from fishermen. And so we've, we've seen that and there's been a lot of interest in it. Dave Hunt, when he was in the Senate, was working on this tirelessly and others have been as well.
Notice they're not named Oregon Sea Lions.
Yeah.
They're California Sea Lions.
Right. Duly noted. But I have read over the county's resolution, I just made copies for you because I'm going to pass these around and let you look at it because if there were a consensus, and I'll ask you, we'll check in with you later and see if there's any concern about having a similar resolution adopted. They've asked us if we would adopt a similar resolution. It doesn't compel us to do anything, it simply supports the efforts of our federal representatives along with other cities and the county to try to do something to address the conflicts with sea lions and the salmon fishery. And so I asked, I told him I would pass this on to you and get feedback from you on how you'd like to proceed. And then next is.
Why don't we ask the tribes to ban the sea lions?
Well, I'm sure they're being presented with similar.
There would be, you know, utilization of those sea lions as they used to do back in the day.
What was that?
Yeah, well, it's ironic to me as a, having an undergraduate degree in biology, it's very clear to me that most of these things we're seeing wildlife do is that they are adapting and responding to modifications we, as human beings, have made to the ecosystem that have tilted the balance one way or the other. And these animals are simply responding to opportunities or challenges, you know, if they're hungry, they're going to.
Or protections.
Yeah, all of those things. And when you tinker with one thing, you know, it's, and five other things happen. So biologically, this is a complex problem. In fact, there's a raging debate right now about cormorants up on Sand Island where, you know, they're going to harvest some of them or call them out. Some people are very passionate about cormorants, but they're not endangered, so there's a different way of responding to, they do eat an awful lot of baby salmon, so that's part of the same problem, you know, is the way we've interacted with our ecosystem.
You know, David, as we're looking at this resolution under paragraph 2, I would just add, direct no in conjunction with state, local officials and tribal officials to develop a long-term strategy.
Yeah, you can note that. Katie, do you have that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then next I want to, kind of, the theme for tonight, I guess, is what we're talking about here, is the environment. But the Oregon City and Friends of Trees celebrate Arbor Day on Monday, April 13th. And I have a flyer here, if any of you are interested in attending the Arbor Day event. It's also on our homepage.
And we did the Arbor Day, the Friends of Trees proclamation.
Yes, we did. And we are Tree City USA for, I think, the third year now. So I think Bill Kabeisman told me his wife's great-great-grandfather or something started, started that program, you know, 100 years ago, so that's kind of a neat little piece of history there. Also, our annual city cleanup event, which I know some of you have participated in over the years, and several staff have as well, that is Saturday, April 18th, and I have a handout on that as well. We usually convene everyone down at Clackamas Park and then there are, I think, five different sites that you can go to. Somehow, I always end up on the slope out here on Singer Hill, but there are, there are other choices. And it's even fun for, I mean, there's a lot of team building and things, it's a lot of fun to see, sometimes the same people show up every year. I know a couple of, a couple of folks that just show up and they work their tails off, but it's only a half a day and you're not expected to stay the full period if you can't. Just come, do what you can and kind of cheer on the volunteers that come. And staff, staff will be there as well, several of them.
Is it John Storm cleanup?
No, we meet at Clackamas Park and then there are five different sites where you go.
So then don't we all get back together at lunchtime?
Yes, that's right. And that's Clackamas.
So typically, the commission gets together and serves, helps serve lunch, I thought that.
No, this is, that's, you're talking about the volunteer concerts at the park dinner. You'll get that chance later.
Well, no, back when, we were, back when I was on the commission, the commission came and helped serve lunch at the cleanup.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
Well, thanks for volunteering, Dave.
It's kind of, it's kind of a self-serve thing.
Well, I'm pretty sure you didn't have anything to do on a Saturday, Mr. Shaw.
Yeah. This'll be my fifth year going, Mayor Holliday, and the times I've gone, it's been, they bring the food and set it out and there's, it's kind of a self-serve line, so it's not, it's kind of fast food, if you will. So it's not the kind of stuff that needs to be served in particular.
Hey, look at me, that tone voice.
And then I would also like to ask, the mayor asked me to remind you of the process that we'll be using to fill your vacant commissioner seat, and Katie Riggs is going to walk us through that real quick.
So I sent you guys an email and the process that we've used in the past is to advertise for about a month. So it would start April 16th and run till about May 21st. And then we would do interviews on possibly June 15th, maybe on the 17th if needed, and then we would appoint the new commissioner on the 17th. June 17th, that is. Is that the process that you want to continue to use?
May 21st, and then we're talking about, you were talking about interviews when?
June 15th.
Oh, because we don't have a meeting between then and then.
Well, there is a meeting, but it's hard to get the chamber to have a special meeting to do our interviews because we have so many other boards and committees that use this facility. And so looking at our.
I wonder who takes precedence.
Calendar, you obviously do.
Well, we also have a very tight turnaround for your deadline of applications and then a couple of days later, you'd be doing interviews. And we wanted you to have enough time to actually, everybody to have time to prepare because it was a very rushed schedule otherwise.
All right. You'd be around? No. And I didn't think about that at the time because the process in terms of the timeframe's fine, but some of the meeting dates might not be fine.
Meeting dates?
It's the regular meeting dates.
It's the regular meeting dates.
Yeah, it's the regular city commission.
Okay, well, the, the...
The interview's on the 15th, Monday, the 15th.
Of June?
Of June. It would be, we'd have to hold a special meeting to do those interviews.
I'm actually scheduled to be out of town that Monday.
So we could, we can put those interviews back on your regular meeting schedule, too.
I'm almost, the week before.
Yep, we could do it on the work session.
Would you prefer we do those, we can add those to your work session?
Is there a work session on the 16th?
No, it wouldn't be on June 16th, it would be on June, the week before the, that.
Yeah, June 9th.
June 9th?
Yep. It would be June 9th.
Okay, well, then you'd have to notice that it's a special meeting, because we're going to do the interviews and we're going to have a vote. So you could just notice.
Well, what we've done in the past is we've done the interviews, then you've taken some time to review the interviews and think about your vote, and then we've actually voted and appointed that person at the city commission meeting.
Yes.
So you would, you would do the interviews at the work session, and then you would vote and appoint that commissioner at the next city commission meeting, which would be on June 17th.
That's correct.
No, I have the, the computer, the computer screwed up my schedule. No, I know, I know, but my, when I plugged this in for the year, it messed up somehow.
Sounds like if we stick to either work sessions or regular commission meetings, though, that's the easiest for your calendar.
Are you going to be out of town, Rocky?
Because everybody else has planned around that, yeah.
The 9th, that week is southwork.
You guys get summer, all summer off, so you're...
Well, the 9th is southwork, and then I have a work thing, so I hadn't...
We'll just, we'll work with that.
We'll email, yeah.
We'll email you some alternative dates, and we'll stick to your regular, either work sessions or regular meetings.
And if you have to participate in the interview by phone, you can.
Okay.
But I don't want you to miss it, I think it's too important for everybody to be involved in that.
Yeah, I do too.
All right, well, we'll work it out, and everybody can email. Is there anything else, Mr. Fraser?
That's it.